What I'm gonna do is a countdown and then we'll go ahead and begin our Board of Commission. I'll make an introduction here in just a second. Alright, five, four, three, two, one. Welcome ladies and gentlemen to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky. This is a regular meeting in City Hall, April 16th, 2024, 4:30 PM. And we're gonna begin with a special guest and then we'll have the call to order. But I have a special guest that I'd like to introduce and he's going to provide our invocation. He's also gonna provide some information that we've talked about and he's going to come up here to the podium and that is my good friend Chris Page. He is, a couple of things about Chris is that Chris is a entrepreneur. He is a owner at Shake Rab Barbershop. He's been an owner there for six years. He's also an associate pastor at the Icy Sink Baptist Church in Smith Grove, Kentucky. And he is joined with his wife tonight and his wife is Shalena Page and his beautiful daughter, Shatavia, they're both beautiful. So Chris, please call them up and then talk about accessibility a little bit and then provide our invocation. Thank you. Absolutely. Shatavia's gonna start. Wait, hang on. We're gonna give you a microphone. That way we can hear you, Shatavia. We're gonna talk about the very thing that we're accommodating right now.
Hello, everybody. My name is Shatavia. I was born with spina bifida, but I'm, but I'm trying not to let that get in my way. I want, I want you all, I want to put you all in, in my shoes for a sec. I know they're little, but just bear with me for a little. Imagine you can't walk. Imagine you can't walk and you use a wheelchair full time. One, one day you wanted to go to the park. When you got there, you, you noticed there was mulch everywhere. What would, what would you do? Or what if you wanted to attend a summer camp? But they didn't have transportation for you. How would you feel? While you're thinking, I would like to introduce you to my mother, Shalana Page.
Good evening, members of Bowling Green City Commissioners, Commissions and fellow citizens. My name is Shalana. Today I stand before you as a wife, a mother and an advocate for a cause that's near dear to my heart and others. Inclusivity is accessibility. My daughter Shatavia, she's nine years old. She was born with spina bifida, as she already told you. While it's not anyone's fault, she was born with a disability, it would be my fault if I didn't speak up on her behalf and others like her. In Bowling Green, we pride ourselves on being a community that cares. Yet for individuals with disability, the reality can sometimes paint a different picture. Where a lack of access signals exclusion, not inclusion. Inclusivity is not just a responsibility, but an opportunity to lead with empathy, design with intention and build with foresight. If we genuinely love BG like we say that we do, then it's not enough to meet the minimum standards set by law. To the esteemed, to the esteemed commissioners and all present, let us commit to making inclusivity synonymous with accessibility. Inclusivity means creating spaces where everyone can participate fully and freely. In closing, we can transform Bowling Green into a beacon of inclusivity where everyone is welcome and every barrier to accessibility is dismantled. Thank you for your attention, compassion and willingness to make Bowling Green a better city for all, all its disabled citizens. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Can we ask, I guess, who the other young lady is with you guys?
That's our cousin from Houston, Texas. Her name is Jayla. We call her JJ and we don't wanna get into that. But don't be surprised, Commissioner, but if you see her at the Olympics one day, she's one of the most athletic kids that I've ever seen in my life. Y'all ready to pray? Amen. Let's pray. Let us pray. Lord, as we come together in this council chamber, I lift up our city manager and each member of our board of commissioners. We are thankful for their leadership and their stewardship. Guide them, oh Lord, as they work to enhance the quality of life for every resident with a permanent address, for every visitor passing through and for every foreigner looking for refuge. Grant them the wisdom to ensure service, delivery, uphold fiscal responsibility, vigilance in public safety, creativity and neighborhood revitalization, foresight and visionary leadership and prosperity in economic development. I ask all this in the name of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and by the power of the Holy Spirit and let all those agree. Say amen.
Alright, we'll start with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, thank you so much for your prayer for our city. Shalena, Shatavia, thank you for your bravery and for coming to speak to our city. We appreciate you. Okay, we're gonna begin with a roll call. Mrs. Jackson?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Perrigen?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here. And we're gonna go ahead and Mr. Mizel, you have comments at this time?
I have a, just a couple, Mayor. First of all, to get this out of the way, those of you in the audience that would like to make public comments, please sign the register in the back corner of the room. We'll take that up after our regular business. And then, second item, I would just like to thank some, some folks. We had a tremendous fire back at the, last week of March over at Valor Oil. Probably the biggest chemical fire we've ever faced probably here in Bowling Green. And the teamwork that happened that day was, was incredible. BGFD was, was incredible that day. They had that massive fire put under control within 45 minutes. They responded so quickly and rapidly and efficiently and got that under control. We had also our parks maintenance guys bringing bulldozers and backhoes over to move dirt to contain the spill of the, of the, of the oil and the gas. We had Public Works Ops guys over there doing the same thing. Public Works Environmental Compliance, Matt and his team were, were on the spot. And then, of course, Bowling Green Police Department was there keeping control of the, of the area. Then we had some private, I think some private partners, TPM and Valor, you know, helping out as well. So just kudos to everybody that played a role that day. You know, Ops and Matt went down Whiskey Run and caught, caught the, the water and the chemicals before they got to the river. Built a, a really quick, quick dam in, in that Whiskey Run system. And we got that, got that done. So applause to everybody.
I think we have a few firefighters being promoted tonight as well.
We do. And last thing, is, last item is there will, there will be a need for a closed session and I'll let Ashley read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 6110-1C for discussions of proposed litigation against the city related to acquiring land for road expansion, action may follow.
Move, second. Move by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mrs. Jackson?
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Mizel. Our first item is our regular meeting minutes for March 19th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-58.
Municipal Order approving the promotions of Esmer Farazovic and Brian Kozak to the position of captain and Stephen Estes, Joseph Hernandez, Greg Hollis, Travis Callen, Taylor Kaiser and Roy Rogers to the position of engineer in the fire department.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by?
Second.
Carlos Bailey. Alright, Mr. Mizel.
A big day tomorrow, opening of our Station 8 at the Trans Park. And I'd like to ask Chief Brooks to come up and make his recommendations for the leaders that will be up at that station. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening and thank you for the opportunity. Truth is, we're less than 24 hours from opening our service out there at the Trans Park Station, Fire Station Number 8. The opening of this fire station is just another example of a city continuing to find ways to win. Whether it's Valor Fire or Law Circle or the next incident, this city continues to find wins. We win often and we don't win without the support of elected officials and the leadership around us as they look to fund and find ways for us to improve. Eight people tonight is being recommended. And sure, they win tonight with your approval for promotion. But the true winners are the citizens that we will soon be able to better serve, save and protect. A fire station opening is big stuff as we chart a new history in the, in the fire department. These eight that I bring before you qualified have a body of work worthy of promotion and have competed in our internal promotional process. As I call them, I'm gonna ask them to stand. Brian Kozak, recommendation for promotion to captain. Esmer Farazovic to captain. And the next six will be recommended for engineer. One of them cannot be here as he is down in Alabama attending training. Roy Rogers, Greg Hollis, Joseph Hernandez, Travis Callen, Taylor Kaiser and Stephen Estes. If you got any questions, I'll take them now, but they're ready.
Thank you very much, Chief. We appreciate your recommendation and we're excited about tomorrow's event. And the kudos go beyond to the leadership on your team for risking their lives to put out a fire, which is a gas station. And I literally saw heroes in place, literally ladders over tankers that could have, had they caught or they would have taken out lives and taken out our city in ways that we can't even fathom. So thank you to our firefighters that have risked your life and continue to risk your life. Thank you to the families that are here. Would all the family members that are here, please stand that are here with your firefighters being promoted tonight. Let's hear it for our families. Commissioners, we ready to make this happen? Alright, Mrs. Jackson, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal Order Number 2024-59.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Matthew Phillips and Justin Sanders to the position of police officer in the police department.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Lori Gray, our HR manager, to come up and make recommendations for these two appointments. Lori?
Evening.
Evening.
I'm here to recommend the appointment of Justin Sanders and Matthew Phillips to the position of police officer. I feel like it's very loud. They, they will attend Class 7. This rounds out our class. We'll have nine that will start on Monday for Class 7, so we're excited about that. I'll have Matthew stand up first. Actually, they've already, they paid attention. Great. Graduated from Baker Early College in Medford, Oregon. He has a bachelor's degree in sociology with a minor in psychology from George Fox University. His most current employer was Amazon DSP as a delivery driver. Justin Sanders, he's gonna stand up, graduated from Greenwood High School here in Bowling Green. He attended Lake Cumberland CDL School where he obtained a Class B CDL. His most current employer was Scott Waste as a CDL driver. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Alright, thank you, Lori. Matthew, you have family with you? Can you introduce?
This is my wife, Maddie. And then this is my father, mother, daughter, Erin and Jamie and then Maggie's younger brother, Eva.
Alright, very nice. Alright, Justin, do you have anyone with you tonight? Well, we're here with you tonight. Alright. Commissioners, ready? Okay, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations, Matthew and Justin. Municipal Order Number 2024-60.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Roshan Holly and Kayden Humphrey to the position of operations technician one in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
We've had a couple of resignations in Public Works Ops and I'd like to ask Lori Gray to come back up, our HR manager, to make a recommendation for filling these.
Hello again. So I'm here to recommend Kayden Humphrey and Roshan Holly to be appointed to the operations maintenance technician one or what we call OMT 1 in the Public Works Operations Division. Kayden could not be here with us tonight. He currently works for our city's landscape division as a landscape helper. He graduated from Morn East High School and he attended Western Kentucky University pursuing a degree in business economics. He also serves in the Kentucky Army National Guard. Roshan, who is here with us this evening, if you'll stand up?
Roshan Holly is being recommended for appointment. Also, he currently works for DoorDash. And before leaving North Carolina, he worked for a security office, as a security officer for Archangel Security. He graduated from Proquemont High School in Hart, in Hurtford, North Carolina. So just let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Lori. Roshan, do you have anyone with you tonight? Alright, well, we're happy you're here tonight, so thank you. Alright, Commissioners? Okay, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations, Roshan. Municipal Order Number 2024-61.
Municipal Order authorizing renewal of bid number 202348 for fire department equipment from various vendors in a total amount not to exceed $200,000.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Someone years ago in the fire department came up with this, I thought was a really good idea. The equipment that we buy that are, that's not attached to our trucks, we, we need, we need it and we need it fast when we need it. And so what we did is we went out and did this RFP that, that allowed everybody to, to provide a bid based on a discount of what, what your MSRP kinda price would be, a discount off of that. And so we did this again, this past year with the option to renew it. And so we're coming to you tonight asking for your permission to renew with these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different companies that supply us with different, different products for the fire department and all based on a discount. And we are recommending that we renew with, with all of these, except for there's, there's one that was not able to recommit to the same pricing and so we went to the next, next closest bidder. And that's in the memo provided by Deputy Chief Doug Morris, who is here tonight, can answer any of your questions on this item. But we, we are recommending approval for renewal.
Thanks, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-62.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting the purchase of USDD equipment for fire department, for fire station five through a sole source from US Digital Designs, Inc. of Tempe, Arizona in the amount of $55,062.69.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This is an important piece of equipment, IT equipment that we need for Station 5 that we're, that's under construction. What this is, it's, it's, it pertains to our, our call out, our 911 call. And it provides that station with a controller, speakers, amplifier, UPS, lights, signs, mounts, push buttons for the alerting system of the, of the fire station. It's called USDD, which is a unique system that only coordinates or is a match for our 911 system. So I'd like to thank Anita Weeks, our IT Director, for working on this, putting it together, put together a good memo for you. And we are recommending the sole source purchase from US Digital Designs for this piece of equipment that will go into Station 5 when it's ready. And we feel like we wanted to get this on order because of the time delays that, that come with this type of specialized equipment. Anita's here can answer any questions. Deputy Chief Morris is here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? Okay, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-63.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting the number 202431 for transit buses for Model 1 Commercial Vehicles, Inc. of Indianapolis, Indiana in an amount not to exceed $1,413,785.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This is a unique request and it's, it's for what we call low floor cutaway buses. And we've got a picture of them in your packet. These are very accessible type public transit buses which, which are funded by the FTA. We got money to buy these from FTA. And so we're, we went out for a bid proposals. We only got one from Model 1 Commercial Vehicles, Inc. And it was a good proposal. Our staff and RTB Dev, our transit manager evaluated their proposal and scored it at a 92, which is a really good score. And we feel like they are capable supplier for these buses. And these are gonna be really nice buses to get on and off, especially with any, anybody that needs special, special needs and needs, needs help getting on and off. Brent Childers is here, worked on this for us as well as I think I saw our transit manager come in. There he is in the back. So they can answer any of your questions on this, but we are recommending approval.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? Alright, not sure?
I know in the past couple of years we've had issues with, you know, how long it took to, to get new inventory in. Do we, do they have these in stock or will it be a while?
It will still be some time. This is the reorder of an order we did several years ago. The Ford canceled the, the frame, the chassis, so we had to go back out. So we have more confidence in the supply chains at this point in the process. So we're comfortable that we'll be able to get them, but it will still take some time to buy the chassis from Ford and then build out the product to what we specified. So it will still take a little bit of time. We're more comfortable now than what we were a few years ago.
Thank you so much.
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-64.
Municipal Order authorizing and approving revisions to the Housing Choice Voucher Program Annual Plan and Administrative Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Since we are a public housing agency, we, we have to follow the rules of HUD. And we are to submit an annual plan at least 75 days prior to each fiscal year. And we're approaching that, that timeframe right now. The annual plan does cover our fiscal year period, July 1 of '24 to June 23rd, June 30th, '25. In your packets is this, the plan. Also HUD is now requiring PHAs to update their administrative plan to reflect the housing opportunity through Modernization Act that was passed back in '16. Also known as HOTMA, not Hot Mama, but HOTMA. And so we are proposing this update to this plan and administrative plan and ask for your approval. Brent Childers is here, can answer any questions. And I'm sure El, Elvira Romic had her hand in this too. But is she here?
Yes.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Elvira, I couldn't see you. There you are. So they can answer any questions you might have on this, this update or this plan for HUD that we need for our public housing.
Elvira, how are you? Good to see you tonight. Great work on this. Questions, comments? Okay, none at this time. Roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-65.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security grant funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of training equipment for the fire department in the amount of $32,656.67.
So moved.
As you mentioned, it's across the board other than Carlos, but we'll give that to Beasley Brown and to Linda Hill. Mr. Mizel.
We would like to submit a, submit an application on behalf of BGFD for this Homeland Security Grant, $32,656. They would, would like to replace their adult-sized mannequin that they use for training for, for fire and a lot of other things. We use it for first aid and CPR training throughout the city. And if we could get this grant, it's 100% funding, no, no local match and just need your approval for this.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? Alright. Nick, thanks for finding another grant for us, for the fire department, maybe jointly. Okay, roll call, please.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-66.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security grant funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of security camera technology for the police department in the amount of $61,500.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel. Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
Other Homeland Security Grant, 100% funded, no match, required $61,500. This would be for the Police Department to go out and purchase the Flock Safety Camera System, which provides license plate recognition-type technology. We can capture that and help solve and prevent a lot of, a crime. Not too, not too recently, there was a homicide investigation where BGPD received Flock camera data from two partner agencies, one in E-Town and one up in Indianapolis. And we were able to track down the suspect and, and solve that, that crime. So very, very useful technology, fast and efficient capture of the data and would, would be a good asset to have for our Bowling Green Police Department. Chief Delaney is here, can answer any questions as well as, as our, our major in the back of the room. So.
Burnham.
Burnham.
All right, questions at this time? Chief, where are some of the places you would place these cameras optimally?
Out of a map, actually. The Flock codes every day. We're going to do a, sorry, I have a map.
See you, Chief.
Good evening. For some locations around town, we're going to do 10 cameras at first to do a proof of concept to see if that's actually the best locations for those cameras. Scotts Road and some other areas around town. And then once we get that data back from there to see if that's what we're looking for before we set them permanently, we can do that. But 10 is starting out modestly. A lot of our surrounding agencies that are smaller than us, E-Town has 40 right now. Louisville, I think, has over 100. Lexington has over 100 cameras. They're very useful. And there's already two Flock cameras privately owned in Bowling Green right now. One's by retail business and one's by Neighborhood Homeowners Association. So people are seeing the value in this and being able to solve crimes and prevent crimes also too.
And, and just for public's education, this is not for traffic tickets, correct?
No, sir, not at all. It's for helping solve crimes, helping find missing people, find stolen vehicles. There's numerous applications, but it's not capturing facial recognition or any data like that. It's a license plate reader only, or vehicles that we're looking for.
And would our 911 operators have access to these cameras for visual? Or where would the visual be?
It's not really a visual where it's capturing, where you're, you're viewing the cameras. It's if there's a hit or there's information that's placed into the system and then we get a, an alert on that license plate reader. So nobody will be sitting and watching cameras.
Big brothers watching, per se.
Not really, but that's the technology behind it. And it stays, the data is stored for 30 days and then it automatically rolls off. It's a roll in 30 days unless there's a subpoena or warrant to, to hold the, the information longer.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions? Okay, roll call please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-67.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of an Implementation Application for Climate Pollution Reduction Grants Program to the US Environmental Protection Agency in an Amount Up to $49,999,999. So moved.
Second.
Carlos Bailey, and second with Sue Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
So if you all remember, I think it was last year, maybe, maybe longer, I can't remember, but we were one of three cities in Kentucky that qualified to accept this $1 million of CPRG planning money, climate pollution reduction grant money. And that, we were, it was Lexington, Louisville, and Bowling Green. And so we took that million dollars and we were, we were instructed that we use that to come up with a plan to submit a grant, application for climate pollution reduction control. And so we were able to hire and contract with EY and a global sustainability company that helped us put together a plan. And I'd like to, to recognize Jake Moore and Matt Powell. We were able to, to pull in Jake Moore to help us put this plan together and write all of the, the documentation for this. And so we are now ready to submit for a $49,999,999 to the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program, hoping to put this into work toward our electrifying our GoB, GoBG Transit Buses, as well as the WKU Public Transit Fleets. That's, would be about 25 million. We would also plan or propose to put, put 9 million toward expanding green spaces and mixed-use paths. And then we would propose to develop and distribute solar energy generation for WRACC and BGMU in the amount of $16 million. So Mr. Jake Moore is here, Mr. Matt Powell is here, can answer any of your questions on this application to the CPRG. We recommend, we were recommending and asking for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. And I know Matt Powell has been singing Jake Moore's praises for his writing ability and we stole them from the newspaper. I do have a question. Is this an all or nothing or can it be given in portions? Or what would we expect in a grant of this enormous size? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. You don't get this kind of money unless you ask for it. According to EPA's guidance, they themselves say that they have the ability to partially fund grants, although they don't see themselves doing that. However, after talking to some similar, similar-sized entities and hearing just how much they are asking for, there's 160-something eligible states and communities and there's only $4.6 billion on the table. If everybody's asking for $250 million, the EPA is going to have to make cuts somewhere. We're hoping that if it's all or nothing, the level that we are at, we're a tier D grant, we're hoping that they would just see the 49 million and give it to us. However, there's a chance that just because so many people are asking for quite a lot of money, they will go through applications and maybe partially fund. So hoping to get it all, hoping to get some of it if they decide not to give us all of it. But yeah, you never get $49,999,999 unless you ask for it. So that's what we're doing. Shout out Matt Powell for initiating this process and going after these funds. Started last year, right? He got it off the ground, so here we are.
Commissioners.
Jake, if you don't mind, will you explain? Because when I talked to him before the meeting started, I'm like, just round it up to 50 million. Will you explain? We're glad it's not.
Well, it, it, it looks a little weird that it's 50 million minus $1. 50 million is an entirely new tier. I believe that tier goes from like 50 million to 200 million. We thought that it'd be a little bit more, our speed to go in this, this tier, which is, I think it's 20 million to 49 million. But this puts us in a, in a bracket. We feel we're more competitive with projects that are more our size. So we could have gone to 50 million, but it felt like it'd be, give us a bit of an edge to, to take that dollar off, just to be safe.
Would, would you mind just sharing kind of the, some of the public input you got? I know you all took some time to listen to kind of what the public would hope for with this once-in-a-lifetime funds. So just, and talk about how maybe that's incorporated and how we put forward.
So we met with stakeholders in all four counties of our metro region. One of the biggest asks was, we want renewable energy, we want solar. We also had people who wanted electric vehicles, they wanted electric buses, they wanted electric transport, they want charging stations. And then almost everybody we asked and talked to wanted parks, green spaces, places to enjoy nature. After talking with our consultants, these are three regions where we could create some big savings in our greenhouse gas emissions, especially in transportation and energy generation sectors. So it was a combination of what the public wants, as well as what the numbers say. You know, how, how many tons of CO2 can we remove from the atmosphere or not generate in, in a span of five to 25 years? So public input and the numbers put it together. That's, that's how we came to these three main measures you see before you today.
Let me ask you also this. This is something that last year, when we were reading, at least two of us read this and suggested it. It was like we should go after this because it could be something that we will lose, you know, if we don't. Because it was one of the things that Louisville was going to get it, Lexington was going to get it. But can you also tell the public how this is not only something that's going to reduce pollution, but it's also something that, you know, with, in years, it can make some type of money. It has a huge rate of return for the future. Can you talk about that?
This is kind of a, a way to kickstart our regions move towards more renewable forms of energy. Sometimes it takes a public entity like a city government to, to make the first step to push for these kind of policies and procedures. You know, Rec, Warren Rec came to us wanting to invest in solar. You know, if we are funded and we create a 10-megawatt solar farm out in the county and folks see that, they realize that it's possible to do solar here. That brings in industry, that brings in people switching from fossil fuels to solar electricity. This is kind of a springboard to get more people interested in, in reducing their carbon footprint. So it could attract future, it could attract new businesses, bring people into the region. You know, we're obviously growing very quickly. We know that our emissions are probably only going to go up because there's more people living in and around Bowling Green. This is a way to get us set right for the future and make this city as green as possible.
I'll tell you that if you ever go out to Myers, maybe about five years ago, you know, three years ago, you didn't see so many people using those chargers that's there. So I think having more chargers is going to help our population because I'm starting to see more and more electric vehicles. Last night I was at Myers and it looked like all those spaces were taken. But then it looked like there was two other Teslas that was parked just to wait for those other chargers. So we see that growing and we see like the, it's going to be something that's here and it's going to be growing forward. So I appreciate you, Mr. Powell, and I also appreciate you, Mr. Moore, kind of getting these things started because I think it's going to be helpful to our community.
I also just want to echo that thanks to both of you. This is a huge grant and I can't imagine, you know, all the work that went into that and just grateful that we had, you know, the consultants to really make sure we put together a competitive grant. And do we have a timeline in terms of when we should hear back about if we get the full grant or partial grant?
Yes, it sounds like the EPA will make their decision sometime in the summer, hopefully July. And October 1st has been set as the beginning of the performance period. So if we are chosen to receive funds, we can begin work on that October 1st. And we have five years to complete all these three measures.
Much.
All right, thank you, Jake. Thank you, Matt. It's the most I've heard you talk, Matt.
Not done.
All right. No further questions? Roll call please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, go forth. Ordinance Number BG 2024-5, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning a Portion of Attractive Land Containing 0.1388 acre from MHP Mobile Home Park and HB Highway Business and HB, to HB Highway Business and MHP Mobile Home Park Located on a Portion of Property at 1823 Morgantown Road, Presently Owned by 231 Real Estate LLC. So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
City County Planning Commission met on March 7th to take up this, this item. And there were eight members present and there was a six yeas to recommend to pass this rezoning at 1823 Morgantown Road. Ben Peterson is here with us tonight, can answer any of your questions on this item.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time?
This, this will be, these, before you tonight will be our last ones before the new alternate zoning kicks in.
Thank you.
That was effective April 1st.
1st. Okay, other questions? Roll call please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2024-6, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Tracks of Land Containing 1.3320 acres from HI Heavy Industrial to HB Highway Business Located at 2950 and 0 Fitzgerald Industrial Drive, Presently Owned by Jerry E Baker Foundation, Inc. So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
This rezoning was also on the March 7th City County Planning Commission agenda. There were six of the eight members present and this was a six, 6-0 vote as well in favor of the rezoning on Fitzgerald Industrial Drive. Again, Ben is here, can answer any questions on this one too.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None? Roll call please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2024-7, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance Amending Zoning Ordinance. Ordinance Amending Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8 of the Zoning Ordinance for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky as recommended by the City County Planning Commission. So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel.
Before you, here is the proposed amendments to Planning Commission's articles. This was taken up at the March 21st Meeting of Planning Commission. And there are changes proposed to Articles 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8. A lot of these have been discussed in our, were discussed at our planning, or our strategic planning retreat back in January that we had, our group had at Convention Center. And there's a good summary of these in your packets that Planning and Zoning put together. And then, of course, Ben Peterson is here tonight, can answer any questions you might have on these.
Okay. Mizel. Questions at this time? None? Roll call please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-68.
Municipal Order Approving Construction and Accepting Maintenance of Production Avenue and Prosperity Lane in the Kentucky Transpark Sections 4 and 5. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
These are two stretches of roadway up in the Transpark, about 1.8 miles. Our group, our city public work staff went up, inspected this along with planning and planning zoning staff. Everything looked good to go. And we are accepting the roadway, the sidewalk, and the stormwater that are all, all included along these streets. And again, this is Production Avenue, Prosperity Lane, in the Kentucky Transpark. Ben is here, can answer any questions, as, as well as Melissa, the counselor, our, our city engineer, and Andy Souza. Andy may have stepped out, so, or Andy's in the back, so. Recommend your approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Thanks for the recommendation. Questions at this time?
Also want to say thank you to Meredith Rosansky that's here, that is, kind of leads the board for the ITA, of which Jeff and I sit on. But, but probably none of this would be happening if it wasn't for the likes of Melinda that was at the reins at the beginning of the Transpark when it was a house. It was a house in a dream. So thanks to her and, and the vision of the judge and other folks that, that worked on this, it's amazing. I just was talking with the, with the firemen that, our new fire station that's opening tomorrow that's adjacent to the Transpark, from one end to the other, it's five miles for them to travel. That's pretty incredible, starting with a house in a dream. So, thank you all.
Andy, we're adding 1 mile, .81 to your, your docket there, so. All right. Roll call please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-69.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing execution of a lease agreement for a portion of the Glen Lilly landfill property.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Matt Powell to come up and give you a brief overview of this. Basically, we are looking at a portion of our landfill or the land around our landfill. We've been approached by Mr. Charlie O'Connell to do some composting. And we feel this is a good idea and I'd like to let Matt explain the details of the lease and, and how we'll put this thing together. Matt?
Absolutely. Mr. O'Connell approached us basically to, to let us know that he'd been working with Western Kentucky University on a composting program with them and continuing to expand that service outside of where WKU had been working previously. He's kind of reached a point where WKU's not going to be able to continue to host his operation in that same location and, and reached out to talk to us about whether or not we could work something out so that he could come and, and kind of live with us for a while. In short, that's something that the community reached out to us about repeatedly. You guys asked about during the CPRG planning process, what did we hear from the public and access to composting, access to recycling, access to alternative mechanisms for refuse was a repeated question and concern. So we've talked to Mr. O'Connell, we've visited the site several times. This is a portion of the Glen Lilly landfill that never had any waste buried there at all. This is not over the landfill proper. This is an area where we borrowed soil to bury the waste during the landfill portion. So we're well away from any regulatory guidelines. We're well away from any pre-existing contamination, that sort of thing. It's going to work out for the both of us. Mr. O'Connell's operation is going to be able to accept some of our debris. We're going, us hosting us is going to, or us hosting him is going to enable him to expand his services. He's already working with several schools to, to accept food waste so that that's being diverted from a landfill, not going there anymore. There are some other less exciting components of our operations department that he's going to be able to assist us with as well that we recently lost access to our existing services. So all in all, it's a mutual benefit both to Mr. O'Connell's operation and to the City of Bowling Green's operations, as well as providing access to the service to the community at large. So we're hoping that, that with us hosting him there, he's going to be able to continue to grow and expand that business. And someday he'll build too big for us and he'll move away and he's going to leave our soils in better shape than he does. And Mr. O'Connell is here as well if you have any questions directly from him.
Matt, while we're there, I know we used the landfill recently with the storm and a lot of the debris that was on there, there was different levels of it. Some of it was, a lot of it was compostable. And is any of that usable to date?
Probably not. I would have to ask Charlie directly, but that's been, that's been sitting around for about 18 months. It's been commingled with the soils. It's already started that degradation, degradation process where it's at, building up a lot of tannic acids. It might be acceptable for biomass, but you'd be bringing in a lot of clay with it. We'd probably rather not for a fresh operation.
Probably not the question for this.
So that was intentionally left, by the way. That is also a soil enhancement. It takes a lot of years to get there. Mr. O'Connell's operation basically puts that same process on a greased rail. It moves much, much faster when it's managed. What we're doing with that remaining 5,000 or 6,000 yards of mulch that's still there is amending those soils, but it's going to take them seven or eight years to break down and do it in our way.
So it has, it has a purpose.
Yes, it does. Yeah, it was just left behind. We did that intentionally. It also saved us $28 a yard to leave it there as opposed to...
And it was mountains.
Yeah.
Literally mountains of compost. I remember that.
So we moved about 30,000 yards out and we left as much as we possibly could, which was right at 5,000 to 6,000 yards on the ground to save those funds so that we wouldn't spend that additional money. We knew that ultimately we would get reimbursed for it, but that, that took a while.
I understand. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I would love to hear from Mr. McConnell if he has a, if folks are just, O'Connell, sorry. The, if folks didn't know that they had an opportunity to compost here, a little bit of how they can do that. And then also if you could just share with us maybe the partnership you do have with the schools. And then I know part of this is, we have some businesses who, you know, this type of thing they're looking for in a community before they come. So talking about the economic development potential for having this partnership.
I had a great opportunity to meet some of you, not all of you. My name is Charlie O'Connell. I own Compost Bowling Green. Some of you are customers of mine, actually, in this room. We started off with a small residential program where we collect organic matter from homes and we bring that to a compost facility to break down. We started this program for environmental reasons. Organic matter, food scraps, is the number one material that goes into our landfill. And it's the third largest producer of methane, a greenhouse gas, in our environment. Earlier at this meeting, we talked about climate, greenhouse gas pollution reduction, a big grant that we're working on, or the city is working on. So my point here is that by reducing the organic matter that goes into our landfill, by having access to a composting facility, we can also reduce our greenhouse gas impact in Bowling Green. Quickly, we started working with businesses here in Warren County. The first big business we picked up was Champion Pet Foods. Champion Pet Foods operated out of, out of Canada, actually, out of their corporate office. They were mandated to eliminate their landfill, the material that's sent to their landfills. They reached out to us to do so. We were able to come into their cafeteria, collect all that material and compost it for them. After that, as Dana mentioned, we had a great opportunity to meet with Dala Emerson. Maybe some of you are familiar with Dala of our Bowling Green Independent School District. Because of that, because of Dana, who helped to make that introduction, we're now diverting a lot, a lot of waste. Let's just say an average of 3,500 pounds of material from our landfills every month from five of our Bowling Green Independent School District elementary schools. It's a growing business. There's a need for this. Since, since all of this, we've had other large production facilities, factories here in Warren County. And the Transpark, as you mentioned, reached out to us. We're working on contracts with some of these facilities. Yeah. So up until this point, or you know, even still, we've had a great relationship with Western Kentucky University. We've always brought our material to them to be composted. But as Matt mentioned earlier, we've kind of outgrown that. It's still a very great relationship. They're giving us plenty of time to find a new facility. But that's what we're here to talk about today. Actually, moving, moving towards actual production of compost at our, at a different facility. I don't know, I could talk more about the, you know, the business side, the environmental side, the community impact side, if, if anybody has any questions or wants to hear about that.
Thank you so much. It's just so exciting that we have this opportunity for our community to be able to grow in a way that we know is good for our community and for our kids and grandkids. So just thank you for what you're doing and having the type of business that's giving back and helping all of us live into our values.
Problem? Right now at McNeil, we're donating compost and soil back to a raised bed that they're working on for the students there. Composting is a form of recycling. It's probably the oldest form of recycling. They recycled caps, maybe some of you are familiar, to make this raised bed. Now we're donating recycled food scraps, recycled organic matter to go into this raised bed. The young woman here who spoke, I recognized her. I was at TC Cherry today. I believe that she goes there, which is the newest elementary school that we're working with. I think, I think I recognized her. I think she's, yeah, she knew what she was doing today.
Mr. O'Connell, just one quick question. And Mr. Powell, please forgive me if I get it wrong, but did I hear correctly that your company basically allows us to kind of reclaim some of the land, the land that we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so yeah, this is unused land. I don't, maybe Matt, if you want to speak to this, you're more than welcome to.
Only ask that because we have at 42 miles. I always hear about the 42 miles of square miles. So we, we're running out of land. But we know, you know, if there's land that we can reclaim, like the Glen Lilly, how we're doing at the Riverside.
Absolutely. So the, the more impact that we have on the, on the landfills that are around, and those landfills are over 60 miles away right now. That's going to be in White Plains, Kentucky, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and then Hartford, Kentucky are the closest facilities that we have. So anything that you throw in your garbage can now, or the apple core that you throw away, has to go at least on a 65-mile journey to find its way to the landfill. This opportunity, we have an old disused landfill that the city's going to maintain responsibility for in perpetuity. And we've got components of that old landfill where they're not well suited for pretty much anything. Because we, during the operation of that landfill, sort of degraded those soils to the point where they're going to take decades to recover. Mr. O'Connell's operation occupies one of those areas where right now it's simply a burden to us. We just mow it. And that's all we've done with it since the early 1990s. That's all we're going to do with it looking forward. With his operation there, the excess compost that he has, he's going to amend the soils around them. And hopefully, you know, after a few years of his operation, we'll have had enough excess. Well, I'm sure he doesn't want that. He wants to sell it all. But any excess compost can be used to amend those soils there and kind of reclaim that, that portion of that landfill property. So that at a minimum, that can come to some higher and better use at some point in the future.
This speeds it up, too, right?
Yeah, his process is, is designed. This is all naturally occurring processes where organic material breaks down in the presence of fungi and microorganisms and that sort of thing. What he's doing is, is, like I said before, putting that on a greased rail by making sure that it stays oxygenated appropriately, keeping things at the right pH, balancing the kinds of materials that go in along with biomass so that everything kind of has a, a nice happy environment so that it can break down all of that, that carbon quickly and become compost much more quickly than it would if it were just in the woods. Some of these stories get a little bit tou, tough to do out, out, out in the open on, on the composting side of things. Because it, it is something that, that polite society views as a waste. They want it to go away from where they are as quickly as possible. And we've fallen into the habit of just sending that away to be buried somewhere where we don't have to look at it. Mr. O'Connell's operation is, is a fantastic operation in that he's taking something that a lot of people don't want to have to think about and making sure that for our kids and their kids and moving on down through the generations that we've been as responsible as we could be about how we dispose of that refuse.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
Matt, one more, one more thing.
Tried to be brief.
If you can, just recap total acreage out there, total acreage of the landfill itself, total acreage that Mr. O'Connell is going to use. Can you, can you break that out again?
Absolutely. Roughly 266 acres total involved in this property. Only around 30 of it was actually used for landfill interment. Glen Lilly ran into some issues when it was in operation, ultimately wound up in the Superfund Program and was recapped in the mid-1990s. So some of you all may remember there were some pretty serious lawsuits moving around Bowling Green during that time. Since then, we've managed to progress it and get it out of some of the more serious environmental issues. It's pretty sustainable now. This area is the surrounding farm that ultimately we purchased from the original owner in order to make sure that we could handle our environmental impact on that property completely. So you have a central portion of roughly 30, 32 acres that was actually used for a landfill, the surrounding 266 acres. Most of that, the balance of that is just woods. And it's on pretty steep slopes. They're not really well suited for anything. And then the front portion of it where we're at was borrow area. So they just borrowed soil to use to cover up the waste that was being buried in the landfill. And we have just a little bit of an adjacent piece of property, about 17 acres, over to the left-hand side that, that honestly, just looking at the area, you wouldn't realize actually stayed with our portion. And we've leased that out to a soybean farmer three years ago. So that, that, that little component is actually in productive agriculture now. So this is a tiny footprint. Mr. O'Connell's operation is going to start off at 5.25 acres or maybe 5.05?
Five, 5.5.
5.5. There was two fives. I knew. So, so yeah, he's just going to be about five acres on a 266-acre piece of property, 750 feet back, I think, from the gate, 700 feet from, from adjacent properties, that sort of thing. So he's going to be back there all by himself.
It's a great proposal. So looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2024-8, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
As Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
From time to time, we do have to make some amendments to our budget with the things that come along. This is our third amendment before you tonight. There will be a second reading to follow, follow this one at the next meeting. But Katie's here can answer any questions you might have on these amendments. Pretty basic stuff. We got some grants in. We got some donations in after budget was passed. And, and here you'll see the money we received from the Kentucky CDBG DR program that we're going to use out in Whispering Hills neighborhood, things like that. But Katie can answer any of your questions.
Okay. Questions at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2024-70.
Municipal Order approving the reappearance of Pamela Napier and Barry Pruitt to the Bowling Green Audit Committee.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. I think, did you say that, Dana? Okay, good. We actually have two committee members that are serving honorably. They would like to continue to serve, and that is Pamela Napier and Barry Pruitt. And I recommend them for their continuation to the board. Okay. No questions? Roll call, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. We have a presentation at this time for Addiction Recovery Care Crisis Career Program.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce a couple of nice ladies, Ms. Vanessa Keaton and Ms. Brandy Murrell from Addiction Recovery Care. They are looking for a possible location, I believe, in Bowling Green and would just like to introduce themselves. So, and tell you a little bit about what they do.
This is Vanessa Keaton and...
Ms. Brandy Murrell. M U R R, did I say that right? M U R R I E L L.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you. Yes, our owner and CEO was here and spoke to your guys' chamber, I think sometime early March. And so we are hoping to someday be in Bowling Green. You guys can, I'm Vanessa Keaton and this is Brandy. I'm the Vice President of Marketing for Addiction Recovery Care. And you guys can see on the first slide, we are very heavy in eastern Kentucky and we are as far west currently as Owensboro. But we know with the, with how, but where Bowling Green is in the state, this will be a great place for us to be able to explore, coming to sometime soon. As you mentioned, that we have a crisis to career program. So of course, we are an addiction treatment organization. We are a healthcare ministry. And we do pride ourselves in taking people from crisis, from their addiction, into a career. And that's something that sets us apart from a lot of other treatment organizations that you're going to find across the state. So our founder and CEO is Tim Robinson. And his passion for this organization comes from the fact that he is also in recovery. So he was an alcoholic. He's a lawyer by trade. That's what he has always done. And he was the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney in Lawrence County where we were founded. And he had a radical encounter with God. And he, his sobriety date is December 11th, 2006. And so he went on to really pursue what he felt like God was calling him to do. And that's when he resigned as a prosecutor and began what at the time was a nonprofit organization that has now developed into Addiction Recovery Care. On, it was December the 2nd of 2010 is when we opened our first treatment facility in Lawrence County, and that was Karen's place. And that date will forever be ingrained in my memory because I was actually their first client. So when the doors opened on December 2nd, it was, I got to walk through their door. And this organization has radically transformed my life, which is why I can talk about it and have passion for what I know that we do. We didn't even have our cool tagline for crisis to career back then, but that's what it did in my life, even without us having that full program developed at the time. So I'm really proud of what this organization's done throughout the years and what we are able to continue to do as we grow. On our next slide, you're going to, you can see a lot of our executive leadership. And, you know, it's really great to be in the state of Kentucky. As you'll see on the, on the map after the leadership, you know, we've, we've been saying for a long time that we're leading the way in the nation when it comes to addiction treatment. But East Kentucky Tennessee University did a study which actually shows that per capita, we have 70.34 beds per 100,000 population in the state. And we lead the way dramatically from any other state in our entire nation. So we really are making waves when it comes to recovery in our state. And, you know, really proud to be here in Kentucky in general, just because of the strides that have been made throughout the years to help people who are addiction. So here at ARC, we pride ourselves for treatment on demand. We know that when someone has that thought that they want to have, you know, they want help, that if you're not quick in your motion, if you're not getting them help right then, if you're not meeting them right where they're at, if there's not someone to answer the phone or a chat or whatever it is, then they can change their mind really quickly. You know, it's oftentimes a fleeting thought. So we have a 24/7 call center where someone can call, they can chat, they can email, however they want to reach us. We also have a transportation department, which is something that a lot of other organizations don't have. I know it helped us a lot when COVID came along because it prevented family members from being, bringing people to the treatment facilities and risking more, you know, having more of a risk of COVID coming in to our facilities. But what we found was it, it allowed us to be able to meet people where they are at a whole other level when we were willing to go and pick them up. And so financially, it doesn't make sense for us to have a, a transportation... And so financially, it doesn't make sense for us to have a, um, a transportation department because that's just the cost that we endure. But we also know that it's helping people to get through the doors, um, when they're ready to, to receive treatment from us, so. For, so from two thousand and ten, when we opened, to present, we have served seventy-one thousand four hundred and thirty-two clients. And two thousand and twenty-three alone, we served over nine thousand clients in our residential programs and over three thousand in our outpatient programs. So on this next slide, it talks a little bit more about our Crisis to Career approach. Um, our entire program lasts for one year if someone chooses to stay with us for a year. And, um, you'll see, um, in just a little bit, a little bit more about the length and time in treatment. You know, there are a lot of programs out there that are twenty-eight days, and that's great if that's going to work for someone. I know for me, that would have not been enough. And, you know, there's, um, a lot of statistics out there around length of time in treatment and recidivism when it comes to someone cycling back through the system, back through the court system, you know, going back out into addiction. Studies everywhere about that. So we know that that year in treatment really is very important for people. Um, our first three phases last six months, and then if someone chooses to stay with us for phase four, that's what we, that's our internship. And so that is when we add in job skills and an education component to their treatment. So they are leaving our program ready for the workforce, because if you look at the workforce, you know, the lack of workforce participation in Kentucky, and you look at the amount of individuals who are addicted in Kentucky, they really do coincide. I mean, so a lot of your workforce issues comes from the fact that you have people out there who are struggling with addiction, who are unable to be employable at that time. So we know that that's going to help people to, if they have hope for their future, it's going to help them to stay sober. And so allowing them to have, we have a lot of people come to us and don't have a GED, well, that can be their educational component. We have people in GED, we have a hundred and forty people currently enrolled in GED programs across our organization right now. If they already have their GED, that's when we enroll them into college classes. Um, and so that's going to, that can be their educational component. But we also work with the organizations in the communities where we have centers, and we deter, we, we ask them, you know, what, how can we help you the most? You know, do you have a factory that you're having a hard time finding employment, employment there, uh, or having employees there? And then what type of job skills training can we develop alongside of you to be able to allow our graduates to come and work for you when they graduate our program? So, uh, we try to get in tune with the communities that we're in to be able to provide the, the job training that would work the best for the communities where we have treatment facilities. Um, the next slide talks a little bit about the average length of stay, and, um, so everyone doesn't want to do our year-long program. But if you look at a twenty-eight day program's average length of stay, you're going to have somewhere around twelve days because people come and they leave, they don't complete your program. So for us, um, we have an average length of stay for someone, um, who enters our program of seventy-six days. And then we have, if they, so if they don't leave within their first seven days, then, um, so if we take off those first seven days of someone's treatment, for anyone who leaves within those days, then we have an average length of stay of ninety-eight days. So, um, that's, we, we track this. We feel, we feel that this is a huge, um, success factor at our program, just to see, you know, the longer someone's going to be willing to stay in our program, the better off they're going to be when they leave. So besides, um, our Crisis to Career program, we are a holistic treatment company, and, um, we don't just, we don't just teach recovery, and we, um, we don't just have a medical staff. You know, we combine everything together, and it can be summed up as ropes. So we have the recovery aspect. Of course, we employ a lot of peer support specialists to help with our recovery aspect of our program. Our opportunity aspect comes along with the job training and the educational component that we have. Um, our physical health component, we employ approximately ninety nurses right now across our organization. We have nurse practitioners. We know that if someone comes into our facility and they have a health concern, they're going to be unable to focus on their recovery until we take care of that. You're going to see a few more slides about what we're actually seeing when people come into our facility. Um, and then the emotional health component, we employ, we have a hundred and thirty clinicians across our organization. Uh, we want people to be able to be emotionally healthy when they leave. And then the spiritual life component, we were founded as a ministry. I mean, that's what we were when we were, uh, when we originally started. Of course, the spiritual life component is, um, is optional at this point, you know, in order to be able to, to serve the population. Um, depending on which campus you're at, we have multiple different types of, um, of, of spiritual opportunities for people to be able to partake in, so. And that's definitely optional for our clients. But we know that those five pieces together help provide the best holistic approach to care. So, um, we're so focused on educational component that we actually have our own college now, and it's called the Millard College. And, um, in August, it will be fully accredited and be able to take financial aid and have credits that will then transfer to other universities. Currently, it runs certificate programs while we're in the accreditation process. And someone doesn't have to partake in the Millard College. I mean, they can enroll at UK or EKU or, you know, whatever, any type of online program while they're still housed with us. But this is oftentimes what the clients will choose because it's easy, and, you know, we have, they have staff from the Millard College that come and talk to them while they're in our program. Um, but currently, they can get an Addiction Recovery Studies certificate, a Work Ready certificate, a Carpentry certificate, a welding, or a Peer Support Specialist. We also have an ASE Certified Mechanics program, a maintenance program, chaplaincy, culinary arts, and we continue to develop them as, as needed, um, depending on where we need an, another educational component. We actually just purchased a beauty school. A lot of, a lot of our clients were, were very interested in that, and so, and they have been for years, and so we had the opportunity to do that. And so that, we're, we're excited to be able to offer that within the next few months to our clients, too. Um, so we all know that, um, mental illness and addiction run hand in hand, and so, um, this next slide is just, it just shows you, um, out of our clients in two thousand and twenty-three, we had thirty-six point four of our clients, um, that were in our program during that year that actually were, had a, some type of severe mental illness. And so, you know, what came first, the chicken or the egg? You know, sometimes it's one, sometimes it's the other, but it's definitely something that we focus on, and we have, um, you know, all of the licensed professionals that we need to be able to treat someone, um, who, who does have some type of severe, severe mental illness. So this is a little bit more about our medical program. Um, you will see here, this was in two thousand and twenty-three, the different types of bloodborne illnesses and STDs that we saw within our facilities. And I know that can be quite alarming, but they're out in the population, at least when they come to us, we're treating these. And so, you know, it's been very, it's been very eye-opening for us. We, we test people for absolutely everything when they come in our program because, again, we want people to leave whole, you know, absolutely as whole as they possibly can, and their, their health is very important to us. Um, and this is also about, another slide about medical. Um, so we are, we are seeing people, our average age in treatment continues to increase. And so I know that there are a lot of young people who are, um, current, who are starting to use drugs, but it goes up a couple of years every year. And so right now, we're in the, the high thirties for males and females, and so it was in the early thirties a few years back. And so we're seeing people coming in sicker and sicker because they're in addiction longer and longer. And so, um, we, we do see a lot of different medical, medical complexities when it comes to, um, the clients that we're serving. We do offer, um, medication-assisted treatment. It is definitely not something, um, that all of our clients are on. We have a, a large abstinence program, um, but we also offer like a taper of Suboxone or Buprenorphine. And, um, then Vivitrol is something that we offer a lot of our clients. So in our residential facilities, you'll see on the first graph, and then our outpatient, um, facilities are on the second. And so that just shows you the breakdown of the amount of clients that are on no type of medical assisted treatment or else the other types of medically assisted treatment. And our cost benefit by public investment, um, you can see that for every dollar invested, you're going to get a dollar ninety-one return on your investment for treatment in prison. Um, two dollars and eighty-three cents return on investment for drug court, four dollars for, um, med, a medically assisted treatment program on its own. A five dollars and twenty-eight cents return for job training and seven dollars for residential treatment. So when you combine the job training and residential treatment together, you're really getting a huge return on investment when it comes to a program like ARC can offer. And we just, um, brought in a, a new company to help us with some, some data. And so this next slide, this is, um, I know it's from two thousand and twenty-one, we're working on getting two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three data, but they were able to pull all of our clients that had came, that had went through our program in two thousand and twenty-one. And this is post-treatment arrest, and so I love this. It's, it, you know, it shows that someone that stays anywhere between zero and ninety days, there's, they had twenty-two percent of them were rearrested. Then if you go to the other end of the graph, anyone who completed two hundred and seventy-one to three hundred and sixty-five days, they had a seven point four percent, um, of them had been rearrested. But anyone who stayed three hundred and sixty-six days or beyond, they have a zero percent chance that they have been rearrested. So I feel like that speaks volumes and speaks for itself for the fact that length of time in treatment really is what helps people to recover. And then also ER visits, um, and that's something that is a really important, and I'm not going to go over the last couple of slides that are a few behind this, but we had, um, us, a national group called Bs come in, and, um, they, they did a whole survey and studied us for two years because WellCare saw so many of their participants who had came to ARC and then were not having ER visits like they were after they left treatment. And so they came in and did a study on us. They're like, you know, what are you guys doing that's different? And it's like, well, you know, if they are willing to stay with us, then, you know, they're not going to have the ER visits because oftentimes the ER visits were caused, um, from different things with their addiction. So, um, so the same thing with the, with the arrests, as, you know, the longer that someone stays in treatment, the less of a chance that they're going to be, they're going to end up in the ER for anything related to addiction. Um, we are a founding member of both Kairos and Recon, who are, that are two organizations that are helping make policies across the state when it comes to, um, addiction treatment here in Kentucky. And then this year, we were, um, voted as one of the best places to work in Kentucky, so we're really proud of that. I think that's a great thing. So not only are we an organization that helps our clients to do better, we really are an organization that helps our, um, staff to do better, too. Out of, we have about thirteen hundred employees, and fifty percent of them are in recovery, and one-third of them are actually graduates of our program. So we hire our graduates and, um, hope to help other people hire our graduates, but it's really important to us, um, to be able to hire people who've come through our program. And, you know, we're already serving the Bowling Green. You know, we do not have a facility here, but we are serving, you know, the, the people here from your community, and we have a robust community liaison team. We have a team that works inside the jails, inside the court systems. And so I, Brandy Murrell actually leads our liaison team, and so I want to give her the opportunity to tell you guys a little bit about what her team is currently doing here in your community and the other communities across the state.
Thank you for having us. Um, so I'm Brandy Murrell and the Vice President of Outreach Relations. And so the community liaison team and the casey law advocates, and then our peers inside the jail fall under my umbrella. And so our, our big picture of what we do is eliminate barriers to get folks the help they need in treatment. So that, um, means we go where they are. Sometimes that means we're in houseless communities, sometimes that means we're inside the jails, the courtrooms. We work closely with, um, many community stakeholders, DCBS, um, probation and parole, local law enforcement. We're always looking for ways to partner and to eliminate barriers and make other folks' jobs easy, too, that need to help people find placement. We have, like she's, like Vanessa said, we do have, um, a community liaison that's already been serving your community here. Um, and then today, we did interviews to add in, add, add a person who will be completely boots on the ground and assigned to this area. Um, and hers or his entire job will be to help your specific community and specific counties here around there. Um, we have liaisons across the state and also in Ohio, and they work closely with our transportation team that she mentioned earlier and our twenty-four-hour intake line. Are there any questions for either of us?
Absolutely, I, I do. Um, we've, I've seen your commercials on TV, and you say that you're, um, in Bowling Green, and I understand some of that. So just explain a model, if you're a person, is that person admitted, or are they, um, self-admitted? And how are they admitted? And then how, how is that person sustained? Who pays for that person's rehabilitation?
So we have a screening process. So if someone is needing treatment, they can self-admit, they can come in as a referral, and they can also come in as a casey law through the courts. Many are court-ordered or probation-advised, DCBS-open cases. Those, so folks can come in a variety of ways to us. Um, we do screening and then transport them doing it, um, treatment on demand like Vanessa shared. And then many of our clients are coming in and their insurance pays for their treatment. Of course, we also do grace beds. I don't know the number of that, but if you're coming to us and you're, um, for some reason we can't take you, maybe you have Medicare and Medicaid both, and sometimes that can create an obstacle for us, we also can apply for a grace bed.
How many are court-ordered? Because I work in the court system, and you're absolutely right. So we have Park Place, and we have Life Skills, and a lot of times they're short-term facilities, and we know that if it's a short-term facilities, the likelihood of recidivism is going to happen. Uh, but I know when we have like, it's court-ordered, they're normally transported by like the Sheriff's Department. Are you guys picking up the ones who are court-ordered or?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, still?
Yes, unless the court-specific, you know, we do have some locations who the jailer wants to take them, and, you know, that's always an option. But we do have a full transport team that will pick them up on the day of their order or pick them up from the jail, um, and then the liaison can do that as well. But we do provide transportation when it's needed.
How many in your facility are court-ordered? And I know a lot of times they do like a two-way, uh, when they're doing it. How many do you currently have that's court-ordered to be there as opposed to people just coming in themselves?
About forty-five percent of our clients currently are court-ordered.
Okay. How many in Warren County right now that you guys get?
I, um, I don't know an exact number from Warren County currently. I just know that last year, we served a hundred and nineteen out of, of a hundred and twenty counties. So we are, we're receiving clients from almost every county in Kentucky.
It, for me, it's almost like I see the six months, and then I see the other ones optional. I always see like someone that will leave the facility, um, and there's consequences sometimes when it is court-ordered. Why is it not like, I guess, where you want them to kind of stay the other six months? Because I agree with you, the longer that they stay, the better of their chances of getting some type of help is going to go through. But a lot of times, we also see that they gotta want it to, a part of it, just instead of just being court-ordered. How many people just leave after the six months or whatever time they have to stay there?
I mean, we have a, we have a lot of clients who come and leave, and if they're court-ordered, that's something that, you know, Brandy and her team work with the courts, and they alert them immediately. Well, we don't let clients just walk off from our facilities, we will transport them back home, you know, or we will contact the Sheriff's Office and make sure that they, you know, have the ability to come and pick them back up. Um, you know, you're right, I mean, some people do have to want it. We try to create an environment for everyone that they feel invited and they feel welcome in our facilities, and, you know, they want to stay. But we do, we still, do still have people who walk off, you know, try to walk away or want to leave our facilities on a regular basis, so.
My last question, you may have actually answered it a little bit, because I know you said it was based off like religion, you know, when it first started, but what if someone is like Muslim or Buddhist or?
Yeah, that's why the spiritual life component is, is completely optional now. You know, we do offer church services, it's not something one that everyone, anyone is ever required to do at this point. We couldn't be a Medicaid billable company or build any type of insurance and make you, you choose a spiritual, a spiritual pathway when you're in our program.
I got it.
But you would find at our Crown Campus, there are, we do have Muslim clients, we do have Buddhist clients, and so there is a spiritual hallway. That's our largest campus, and that's why it's available there, um, where we accommodate those different faiths.
So are there government subsidies in any of these facilities in Kentucky?
Are you talking about like a stop-in program or something that?
Just to ARC in itself, you're a nonprofit.
And we actually are a for-profit. We, we originated as a nonprofit organization, and then in two thousand and twelve, it was called Odyssey, the nonprofit was. And then in two thousand and twelve, we developed Addiction Recovery Care that is the for-profit umbrella. So no, and we do build Medicaid, but that's the only thing that we get from the government.
So there's no government subsidies from the state of Kentucky or local governments or municipalities? Okay, and my, my next question is, and this is important, because we understand there's, there's wealth in giving people recovery, but there's also a, a change that's happening societal, and that is a lot of addiction, addiction recovery centers are take buying homes. And this is a concern of citizens in our community. Um, I know it's been brought to me multiple times. Um, other commissioners have, have also expressed this. So what is your? So what is your model? Is it homes or is it actual building, a building of facilities? What, what does it look like? What does addiction recovery look like in Bowling Green?
So I have not been in the conversations with our owner about what it possibly could look like in Bowling Green, but I can tell you what it looks like in our other, other communities. We have a couple of them that were bed and breakfasts that we turned into addiction treatment centers. And then we have schools. That's something that we have found, like these schools that have been abandoned. We have a couple of investors who will come in and renovate the schools. And they make great addiction treatment facilities. They have gyms, so they have somewhere for physical activity. We actually have a college campus in Springfield. It was the old St. Catherine's campus, so it's 52 acres. And so it's just going to depend on which facility that you're, you know, that you're looking at. I know what you're talking about. Someone, your next door neighbor could end up being a treatment facility. They're not going to be able to have the CARF certification, the BHSO, all of the different certifications that we have as an organization. Those types of organizations are probably going to be housing and an outpatient program. So they're going to be billing at an outpatient level of care. And they're not going to be an actual residential facility where you're billing at a residential level of care for someone's treatment, which is actually the type of treatment that someone needs, the more intensive treatment that someone needs if they've been a drug addict for 10, 12, 20 years. So that's a lot of times what you're finding in your residential. If they're zoned a residential area, then that's what you're going to probably find.
So for your facilities in Kentucky, what percentage, and it doesn't have to be exact, are in residential areas?
We have...
Three, probably. There's two in Louisa. And then...
Harlem? Yeah. Yeah. I think we have three out of all of ours that are still actually would technically be zoned a residential area.
So it's a small, and I see about 20 on here. So that's, okay.
Very small.
Less than, less than 25%, okay.
Those were in the very beginning. They were earlier on in our development. As we've continued to grow as an organization, we're, while we're opening now that we're seeing. And again, we don't know what's going to be coming, but from what we're seeing from the previous ones, they are, we've done the schools. In Owensboro, we opened up Eagle Creek. That was an old hotel that we renovated. So we're trying, we're looking at more of the, around the 100, ability to house about 100 is what we've been opening lately.
I'm sorry. Typically, Mayor, what happens is they go there, complete the program, and then if they need to go to a group home, that's when they go to those residential. It's a way for them to continue living independently.
I understand, but you know, if you're a resident, you can only have you and your family. And then you have someone that has eight people living in the same house and all renting out every room. And so the residents can't have that. And then here you have an addiction or a recovery center under the medical term is kind of taking away the rules at a national level. And it's a, it's a difficult pill to swallow at the local level.
But what we're seeing here, they typically don't offer treatment at those homes. They go other places. What we're seeing are just the group sober living homes where they're recovered. And then they go there to live with other people like them and kind of get them back into neighborhoods and jobs. They're not treatment facilities. They don't have treatment people on, they don't have treatment people there. The person that runs the house is typically...
We're just trying to understand the model. And we're trying to understand what's happening in our community.
I have not seen one here that has a treatment...
They don't have programming, that's the problem.
Right.
There is the problem. There is no program.
They're using it as a hotel, not as a residential home.
We have one on our street and that's the problem is there are no programs.
There aren't any treatment coordinators there.
The Kairos and the Recon, the organizations that we helped found in Kentucky, like we, we are very, we, there's a ton of bad actors out there and we get it, you know? And we really do get it. And so we are pushing for regulations around these types of things because we understand, you know? And that's why some of our earlier facilities were smaller. And like, you know, we have three left, you know? Like that we, that are in our, you know, in a residential, could be considered a residential zoning. But we're listening to the communities that we're in. And we understand that that's not what they want, you know? We understand, we, we very, very well, you know? And so that's why we're, we moved to a larger facilities. And like I said, you know, schools make great treatment facilities and they've been shut down for 10 years sometimes. And, you know, so just those old schools that are in the communities that, what are you going to do with them? And then, you know, we've found that they make excellent treatment facilities.
Clarification. Yours, the difference between a sober living house as opposed to getting treatment, yours is offering treatment that's actually going to be there.
We don't have sober living.
Yeah, we don't have, we do not own any sober living facilities. It's very different. You are getting intensive addiction treatment when you are in our facilities. And you phase down to the diff, you know, to, to a lighter phase of addiction treatment as you've been with us longer. Of course, you don't need counseling as often or the groups as often and things like that, but you're still housed, you still have complete supervision. It's ran by staff members. It's not, you know, ran by someone else that's kind of in your program that leading, leading that house. So it's, it's very different.
You have an average of how long somebody starts treatment to when they can actually start working? How long does it take?
Six months.
Six months.
They have to complete six months in our, in our program in order to be eligible for the internship, which has the job training and the, and the educational component.
And what about criminal charges? Do their criminal charges have to be resolved before they can come or can they be pending?
They can be pending. It just depends. And we will take people to court. We love Zoom Court because it's, it's much easier for us, you know, when they're, because they're housed and they're there. And it's, and it's better for them. You know, going back to your community 12 days in because you have a court appointment, that gives you, yeah, there's a lot of temptations that come along with that and a lot of triggers. So we love judges that do Zoom Court for that reason. But we make sure that they get to go to their court appointments while they're with us.
What about like violent offenses? Do you have a certain level of offenses that you don't take?
We'll take anyone who's on the sex offender registry. We don't have those folks as our clients. If we have someone who comes to us as a referral from say the community or mom calls our intake line and we find out they have a warrant, we encourage them to take care of that warrant before they come to us. We want to be good partners to our law enforcement, to our, our courts, probation. If a client is with us, housed with us and something comes up and law enforcement needs access to them, but we have them upon admission, they sign a durable waiver, which allows us then to communicate back out to, if law enforcement comes to the door and they ask for Tommy, we go get Tommy. Because they've signed a waiver allowing us to do that. And they don't have the option to revoke that waiver.
You said you don't take, I guess, what about violent offenders? Did I hear anything that if you, do you guys take violent offenders or?
No, it depends on the, what it is. Now, we do run it through our legal team. We probably could get you like a, I'm sure there's probably some we don't take and I just don't have that information. And a lot of the time, the, those folks are not getting referred to us through the courts anyway. And they're already attached to the courts. Because if we screen you, if I screen somebody and they say, yes, I'm on probation, we go speak to probation before we schedule you. We don't just bring, because we're not a hiding place. And we know that some folks want to jump around and try to do that before they go to the front of their judge or before they get rearrested or something like that. So if we find out you have, on our screening form, there's all those different types of questions to identify. Now, they could not, just not tell us any of it, right? And that's going to happen. But we find majority will tell us, yeah, I'm on probation and parole. And they'll try, then we reach out to that contact before we schedule.
Let me ask you this. If they don't tell you, do you do like any type of vetting process where you kind of search their name within the court?
Our legal team will do, they use COOL. I'm not familiar with it. Yeah. So our legal team will use that. And we have a full, and when I say legal team, I'm not meaning like attorneys. It's, we have some attorneys, but it's more of our, we have some folks that are just, that's what they're doing, is making sure they're looking at court stuff, they're pulling up. So we do have a couple of different individuals that pull that stuff. They're usually, I know some, one of them does Court Net for those dates, but I do know we pull the COOLS.
So once they're in our care, that's when we would make sure that we search them and know exactly what's going on.
Got it.
I just have a couple of questions and just thank you so much for what you all are doing. It's, I'm just so grateful to hear that you all are giving people hope and giving them those ladders out of addiction. And I'm just grateful to hear you all thinking about them as, you know, just imagining if you were in that place and understanding the root causes of what, even if they even wanted to get out of it, all those barriers in terms of employment and self-sufficiency and feeling like what is even, how do I even get out of this? And so that hopelessness that leaves people in addiction. And I'm just really grateful to hear that you all are giving folks this hope and helping them get those skills and get the work-ready certificates and getting into jobs. And it sounds like an incredible program. One of the things I'm wondering about is in terms of, you know, a lot of what happens to folks is if they're having a mental health crisis or, you know, going through the courts, do they get a short-term treatment at a hospital or a shorter-term facility? Is there any scenarios where you all have folks coming in and giving, letting people know about your program so that they can, if they feel like this wasn't enough and they're open to it? Are y'all, do you have those connections to Western State and some of the shorter-term programs? And you all, you know, they're learning about your program or has that not? I'm just wondering about the, the insurance part of it. Does that mess up payments? If they've already started at one facility, does it, you know, take them away from being able to do something like yours and transfer to a longer-term program like yours?
No. So if someone goes in and completes a 28-day program and then it's determined that they need more, we would do the screening just like we did had they not even completed the 28-day program. And we have a direct admit phase-two beds is what we say in our language. And so if that's determined and their last date of use is too far back, because that's how insurance would say, okay, they don't qualify for phase-one, which is our initial residential. And so insurance will come back and say, no, but we'll pay for them to go on to phase-two direct. We do admit folks like that.
And do those collaborations exist at this time in those short-term facilities?
Yeah.
Great. One of the things you didn't mention, but I saw in your packet, was that, that there are babies born in your program. So can you talk a little bit about how you're helping moms who are struggling with addiction?
So I can, that's where I started at ARC, was working at the maternity center. It is a, we, is it 52 beds in Ashland, Kentucky? And it houses both mom and baby. Mom can come in any point during her pregnancy or she can come in after the baby's born. Her and the baby can remain housed there until the baby's six months of age. And so I've had mom, when I was there, we had moms that would come in, you know, three weeks into their pregnancy and they're there for a really long time. And they stay on an intern while that baby's there with them. Or I've had a mom come in, the day of admission, she goes into labor. So we, we take them at all, always. And they come in various ways too, from the jails, DCBS cases. And just like we talked about, law enforcement, DCBS is, comes in steel and there's the open cases and works through those things. And they're able to get parenting classes while they're with us. So not only are they getting treatment for their substance use disorder, but they're also learning how to be a mom. Yeah.
How much?
And we have, we've had 300 babies, at my last check, born with us since we opened the maternity center.
Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandy, Vanessa, thank you so much. I know that the questions are tough, but we have to understand what, you know, is being offered and what's being, you know, presented. And you've done a great job of doing that, doing that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys very much for allowing us to come and speak with you tonight.
Appreciate it. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to check to see if we have any comments. We don't. All right. So we're going to take a recess and we'll go to our closed session. Thank you, everybody. We're back in our open session, regular meeting, City Hall, April 16, 2024. And we will read Municipal Order Number 2024-71 and need a motion to add to the agenda.
I'll move second.
I have moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Now Municipal Order Number 2024-71.
Municipal Order authorizing initiation of eminent domain proceedings to inquire 7.09 acres of land in fee symbol permanent easements in a total amount of 208,359 square feet and temporary easements in a total amount of 28,946 square feet from attractive real estate addressed as 1225 Oakland Road and owned by Virginia Robertson deceased.
Sound move.
Move by Commissioner Hill and second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
No comment, Mayor.
No comment? All right. No discussion? Any discussion?
Well, I, I think actually we should, do you all mind to explain what we're doing here to the general public that's watching and why we're doing it?
So as part of the AESC battery plant project, the state awarded our community widening, road widening funds for Freeport Road so that there would be secondary access for employees and for truck traffic in and out of that facility adjacent to the trans park. We have, the road has been designed, 11 parcels were impacted by that road design and we have one property owner that's holding out, which is the property in question. All of the others have been settled and so we need to move forward with condemnation of the property so that we can get the road under construction and meet the deadline of the plant.
Can you explain, does this create like any safety concerns if this is not done?
Yes, this is 2,000 employees that are going to be at this one facility plus all of the truck traffic that they generate as well. And so this will be more than the vast majority of the rest of the park. So you can't just throw them all on the existing roads within the park. We need to have secondary access for, definitely for life safety issues.
Meredith, how many property owners did settle on this initiative?
Ten out of the 11.
Ten out of 11. Thank you.
How many cars do you think are going to be traveling this road and, and how many shifts, this is constant, correct?
Yeah, so it's a 24/7 plant. So there will be, you know, you figure any, any given day, you know, 1,000 more cars on that road. And right now it's barely possible by two cars. So it needs to be widened.
Oh, it's the right thing to do?
Yes.
Meredith, just to add, just back on there, like let's say if an emergency happens, we see it all the time, having one access, let's say if our, our first responders have to get there, would that hinder them only having one access right now as opposed to having two?
You guys have seen just in the time since COVID, when we've doubled the size of the park in that direction and filled it with very large plants. You're driving past Crown, you're driving past Ball, you're driving past OI Glass and Tyson. So you're betting that in that one moment, there are not major truck traffic related to all those other facilities going on that's going to impede that. And if it was my life, I wouldn't want that dependent on everybody else not being busy at that time.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, Meredith. Roll call.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Okay, this concludes our meeting for City Hall and our next meeting will be May 7, 2024. We adjourn. Thank you.